All right, just can you hear me now? I'm assuming so. Just for anybody that's attending tonight's meeting, if you wish to speak, please go to the district website at www OPS.org and click on the link that we have. You have between 6:00 and 6:30, 6:00 PM and 6:35 to complete your request to be heard for. And then, once you receive an invite, you'll be put into a side room and then you'll receive another invite to be invited for public comment. And the meeting will begin at 6:30 PM.
Good evening, Mr. Perlman. Just so you know, you're not muted. I just wanted to make sure you were aware. And good evening, everyone. Hope everybody's having a lovely Monday.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks, Dr. Logan.
Oh, no worries. Thanks for going to the fruit and vegetable giveaway. Are those boxes heavy?
I would say they're probably 25 pounds.
Yeah, that's, he told me 25 pounds.
It's definitely, I would say, we were kind of looking through it and I would say it's probably enough food for easily a family of four or five for a good week.
Yeah, the goal is seven to 10, depending on the family size, so.
Yeah, it's a lot of.
Yeah.
Everybody was really appreciative. It was, it was fun. It was fun to hand it out.
We actually were able to expand that to some of our faith partners who serve our community, so.
And actually, I will tell all of my colleagues, the Gell that was at, I handed it out at South today. There were some other sites and there's some sites throughout the week, but the Gell at the YMCA that I connected with today, she's gonna send me, I can't remember what program they use, but they do like a signup program for if you want to come volunteer. So I'm gonna pass that on to you guys as soon as I get the link. And if you want to volunteer, it was an hour. If you want to volunteer to go hand out the produce in the partnership with the YMCA, she will be sending that to me and I will be forwarding it to anybody that wants to go in and sign up for any shifts at any schools throughout the rest of the month. And I don't know, is it possibly gonna go into July, Dr. Logan? Is that?
If they continue the grant, which I'm pretty certain they're gonna continue the grant, so.
Yeah, okay. Well, I will pass that on to everyone as soon as I receive it from her.
Thank you, Tracy. Let's get this meeting started and we'll add that to send it to everybody on the board and post it out there for anybody that wants it. Pursuant to Section 841411 in Nebraska statutes and the Executive Order 2024, which was issued on May 19, 2020, the next regular board meeting of Douglas County School District 0001 and Board of Educational Services Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, July 13, 2020, at 6:30 PM. We are having a special board meeting on the 29th at 6:30 as well, just to let you know that. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection on the district website, district OPS.org. Pursuant to Section 841412 in Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, along with the current Executive Order of 2024, are available as an attachment to the agenda for this meeting. The agenda and attachments may be found at the district website as well, district OPS.org. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Vice President Dr. Holman will lead us in the OPS vision and mission statement.
First, our vision, every student, every day, prepare for success. And our mission, Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Mr. Ray, do we have any public comments?
One moment, please. Not at this time.
Okay, just checking. Roll call. Thank you.
Cassidy.
Here.
Gotti.
Present.
Holman.
Here.
Cracky. Perlman. Ryan.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Snite.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
And I'm gonna go back up just to double check, Mrs. Cracky and Mr. Perlman.
All righty. What's happening here?
I'm still here.
Eight here. Thank you, Mr. Perlman. Let's move on to Board and Superintendent Communications. Dr. Logan.
There we go. Starting again. Good evening, President Snow and members of the board. Virtual summer school started today. This morning marked our first day of virtual summer school across our district. A special thank you to our principals, their leadership teams, our teachers, curriculum instruction support, information management services, and our bilingual liaisons who all work collaboratively in the weeks leading up to this morning to ensure our families were prepared to start summer school with access to devices, internet connectivity, and training support. Specifically, within the past two weeks, those teams have reached out to families to ensure families and students alike know how to log into their virtual classrooms using Microsoft Teams and they know how to access course content materials online. This week, elementary families picked up the majority of the 2,000 internet-enabled iPad Air devices purchased to support summer school students' online learning. More than 1,100 middle school students and more than 1,500 high school students are participating in summer school as well. We appreciate the board's support of our one-to-one technology initiative, which removes obstacles related to devices and connectivity that we know many of our families have. Whether our students are in the classroom or at their homes, the investment supports student learning in a 21st century environment. I also, as Cracky isn't in the meeting yet, because not only did they receive their iPad, they also received a bag that had books, notebooks, math manipulatives, crayons, erasers, scissors, and I believe some pencils to make sure that they could do, do work, not just work on their iPad, but also. To ensure families also know that students do not need to be enrolled in summer school to take advantage of the academic resources available throughout the summer at OPS.org. We have resources posted for all grades at that website for all of our students. And in addition, our students in kindergarten through fifth grade received a summer bridge book as well as their 10 books that they received in grades K to three. And then, at grades of four to five, and I believe six, they also received novels. They received four novels for the summer. Providing spaces for student conversations about current events is our next topic. This week, our Omaha Public School students will be invited to engage in conversations to help them process such important current events unfolding around our country. The purpose is to align actions around our ethic of care by giving students a space to discuss what is going on in their lives with peers and what they can do as young people to lead. As a matter of fact, I was contacted by some recent alum from one of our high schools who is seeking to do a peaceful protest, and I will say their school administrator and their, some of their teachers and other administrators are supporting them in that effort. And we are seeking to extend that effort to all of our high schools to ensure we have student voice and help our students process what has been a very difficult time in the United States. Students will meet over the next couple of weeks, supported by our administrators, counselors, and teachers. Well, summer reading continues. Let's hit that 2 million mark. As of this morning, our pre-K through sixth graders have logged nearly 100,000 summer reading minutes with Ed Harrison and Edison Elementary in the lead. Keep reading, students. We have less than eight weeks to meet our 2 million minutes summer reading goal. We know you can do it. We'll be tracking the reading log online and we look forward to seeing those minutes increase immensely, especially while summer school is in session. And I will tell you, I'm going to start my personal campaign that I did last year. We'll restart that to encourage young people and to get that competition going. Healthy competition is always good. As we look forward to the 2020 and 2021 school year, our guiding principles for school reopening plans for the 2020 and 2021 school year. We know our families in the community are eager for details about whether and how Omaha Public Schools will reopen schools for in-person learning this fall. We want to reassure everyone that we are thoughtfully and deliberately developing plans for the most responsible and the best possible path forward. Our guiding principles, as we plan, include prioritizing the health, safety, and welfare of our students, families, and our teachers and staff, maximizing in-person learning time for students and teachers, and providing support to our students, families, and our teachers and staff, including supporting their social, emotional needs in the midst of this pandemic. Omaha Public Schools educates 54,000 students, the equivalent of one out of six students in our state. More than three of, out of four of our students, I'm gonna, let me start that again. More than three out of four of our students live in some of the most highly impacted communities when it comes to coronavirus case numbers. We have an obligation to deliver a responsible school reentry plan that takes the gravity of these statistics seriously. That said, we are currently gathering, synthesizing, reviewing, and considering the best information we can to inform our fall plans. As we all know, there is no playbook for a scenario like this. Our counterparts in large urban school districts across the country can attest. We meet with them weekly to discuss plans and options for the fall. Here locally, we are working together with neighboring school districts to review our efforts and to achieve consistency where possible. However, it is very important to point out that our student body is much larger and we have some very significant exceptionalities that will require us to think about the reentry of our students differently. Our community leaders and parents are key to providing us valuable information on how we can best support and serve our families this fall. Within the past few months, we've gathered feedback regarding what worked well and needs improvement after our remote learning from March to May. Today, we held focus groups to hear from our families, from our staff, some of our teachers, our school leaders, and members of the community. Later this week, I believe it's on Wednesday, the 17th, families will receive an invitation to complete a survey inquiring about their needs and expectations for this fall. We highly encourage all of our families to, to, to fill out the survey. The survey will go out in, I know in at least Spanish, and I'm not sure if it's going out in Korean, but I will update the board on that. Our logistical preparations in progress for in-person learning this fall. To protect students and staff when learning in person, the Centers for Disease Control, state education leaders, and local public health officials recommend wearing masks upon our anticipated return to in-person instruction. Simply stated, if we do not wear masks, it will be nearly impossible for us to return to school. Alongside enhanced sanitation practices and regular hand washing, we anticipate that district-provided masks for staff and students will be part of our comprehensive health and safety efforts to limit the spread of the virus. We want to emphasize that wearing masks would be an important part of in-person instruction because masks play a key role in helping prevent the spread of the virus, according to healthcare officials. Our district operations team is currently developing plans and procedures to implement enhanced sanitation measures inside our schools and facilities. That includes the procurement of personal protection equipment. We continue to work closely with our own health services leadership, as well as local and state health and education leaders as fall approaches. We do have a group that is working with us around health and safety. It includes representatives from the primary care physicians, pediatricians, and pediatric infectious disease physician, our local health officials, our partners in with One World and Charles Drew. And we have some other things that we plan to accomplish, as well as making sure that our students, who, some of whom may have missed routine. some of whom may have missed routine vaccinations, have an opportunity to receive those vaccinations prior to the start of school. I want to thank Lori Boda for working with our local leaders to ensure that we, at the Omaha Public Schools, can sponsor vaccination clinics to make sure that we are ready for school in many, many ways. Of course, the specifics of our routines will look, will look like, the specifics of what our routines will look like will depend on health conditions in August, as well as the directives we receive from public officials in the coming months. We want to emphasize for our staff and families that we are thoughtfully considering our options. We anticipate sharing plans in greater detail with our Board of Education on June 29 during our special board meeting. Following that, regular updates will continue for staff, families, and district partners, as well as at least two community events that are being planned virtually so that we can hear directly from our community as well. Again, I have a congratulations report to conclude my remarks today. I'd like to conclude by extending congratulations to Massimo Saita of South High School for earning the Senior of the Year Award from the Nebraska High School Theater Academy. Massimo, I hope that I pronounced your name right, and congratulations. To Al Griggin of South High for being selected as a top 10 state finalist for Outstanding Actress or Actor from the Nebraska High School Theater Academy. To Daisy Friedman of Central High for being awarded the National Scholastic Writing Awards, a gold key, national gold medal, and the American Voices Medal for her poem, Dear Oregon Donor. Congratulations, Daisy. To South High Schools, Leslie Saavedra Bohorquez for being awarded by the National Scholastic Art Awards a gold key and national silver medal for painting, and a gold key and national silver medal for digital artwork. And to Ellie McGuire of Central High for being awarded by the National Scholastic Art Awards a gold key and national silver medal for her mixed media sculpture, Ladder to the Wild. This concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you, President Snow and Board of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Logan, and congratulations to our OPS students. You are making us OPS proud. Mr. Ray, we're moving on. I just want to make sure, did Nancy Cracky get on? Okay. Any board members have any comments? Dr. Holman.
Thank you, President Snow. I would just like to give a quick shout out to all of our summer school principals and staff in getting our kids in our situation prepared for our kids to learn for summer school. Excuse me, I know that it took a lot to get all the iPads charged up and dispersed to all of our families, and so shout out to you all for doing such a great job in doing so.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Anybody else have any comments?
Mark, I'll have, I have a quick comment. Sorry, I didn't raise my hand. If any of you got on as the meeting was starting, you heard Dr. Logan and I already kind of talking about this, bantering back and forth. For those of you that don't know, obviously, we've been doing the wonderful meal sites throughout OPS. I think we're up to 40 different sites, if I'm correct, Dr. Logan. Is that spot on?
That is correct.
Okay, so this beginning of June, we have partnered with the YMCA with, at the food bank, or excuse me, the, I think it's the agricultural, I'm not sure who the background is between the two of us, but basically, we're partnering with the YMCA on this to do, I think it's 25 to 27, it felt like about 25 pounds today as I held it, but I went today to hand out at South High School, and I think we're handing out the entire month of June, it's 25 to 27 pound box of produce, and it is a lot of produce and fruits. I believe it's going to be at like four different locations twice a week. So the different locations coming up this week are, let me tell you real quick, we did South High today, there was Gateway today. Obviously, if you missed those, the next locations are, I believe, Thursday is Gomez Heritage, Liberty Elementary is tomorrow from 10 to 11, Mountview Elementary is also tomorrow from 10 to 11, and I think there's Oak Valley, if I'm not mistaken, from 10 to 11 tomorrow. I might be missing a location, but I've tweeted it out and I'm putting it on Facebook as well. I think it's also on the OPS website. So anyone that is also in need of fresh produce and fruits, you can also get that at the same time that you can get the food from our nutrition services and our food bank partners with that particular food. So it's kind of a two-stop, two-win for the stop. You can get both of those. Anyone out there that is in need of it due to this situation that we all find ourselves in, it's a great partnership, and we're glad to be able to help.
Ms. Cassidy, I believe it's, I think we have six or eight sites for that. It might be 10. I can't remember.
No, he told me four today, and I thought he told me four every two days, but I could be off on the site, so check the website for sure.
Yeah, I'm not, I can't recall exactly, but there are, the folks are notified. You know, we use our call-out system to let folks know. So, thank you so much.
Perfect, yeah. It was a great time today.
Thank you, Ms. Cassidy. Mr. Smith, did you have your hand raised?
Yes, yes. I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Logan and OPS for providing those one-to-one devices. The Empowerment Network Step Up Program has started, and so a lot of the students have been utilizing that to get their internships begun. We'll continue to be working throughout the entire summer, and so just, I just wanted to say thank you and show appreciation for the Step Up Program, for the support that you provide, the Step Up Program, and our team so they can stay busy and do their internships throughout the summer. So thank you, that's it.
You're very welcome. Thank you for the recognition.
All right, colleagues, if you know how to turn, put your hand up, make sure you click on that hand again to lower your hand. Thank you, Dr. Holman. All right, moving on to, we have no public comments, so we're moving on to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is here before us.
So moved.
Is that Mr. Smith?
Yes.
There's motion by Mr. Smith, second by Dr. Holman. Any abstentions? Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
I'm sorry, Mark. I couldn't get my mic turned on fast enough. I am abstaining from, is it C, Mr. Ray? And I don't remember what the number is.
Yes.
I can't get there. Okay, so I'm abstaining from, which item?
C, claim C.
Okay.
Claim C, which is item H23, okay.
H23, thank you.
No worries. All right, there's, any other abstentions? Alrighty. Mrs. Gotti is abstaining from H3. Roll call, please. Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snite.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to our first action item is Code of Conduct, and my thing went all the way to the top. Dr. McFarland?
Yes, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
We came to provide information on the recommended changes to the 2020-21 Student Code of Conduct.
Doctor McFarland, would you kindly turn your video on while you're speaking?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Is it on? Now I got to adjust my camera. Okay, here we go. So, as I said, last week, I was here before you to provide information on the recommended changes to the 2020-21 Student Code of Conduct. Tonight, I am here to request your action. However, before requesting your action, I want to respond to questions that were raised regarding the recommended changes, specifically on the Level 4 drug and alcohol violation. Our recommended change was to change from contact law enforcement to law enforcement may be contacted. In the days since our last meeting, we have reviewed our behavior responses, our practices, and consulted with our in-house counsel. It is my understanding that there is not a Nebraska statute requiring school personnel to report to law enforcement drug offenses in our schools, including those involving controlled substances. Having said that, every school employee is a mandatory reporter of child abuse, and any staff member suspecting child abuse is required by law to report such abuse. The Student Code of Conduct is not considered the sole source in guiding our staff to respond in our schools. It is one tool that we use to communicate to stakeholders that we have rules to guide behavior expectations in the learning environment, and that there are responses to those violations and expectations. The intent is, the intent is not to criminalize our student behaviors, or, as in this case, potentially criminalize a non-controlled substance that would not be viewed as legal outside of our learning environment. It is to provide our administrators guidance to respond to each situation depending on the details of the incident, such as the age, the development, the capacity of the student, the intent of the incident, and the nature, in this case, of the drug or substance. Further, we heard very clearly the concern regarding disproportionality, and we agree with that concern. And we will continue to provide training to our administrative staff for alternative interventions that teach students the desired behaviors, provide resources to support teaching and learning, and to engage our families as partners in changing student misbehavior. We propose this rather than the punitive responses that may not change behaviors, that may create greater consequences for our students outside of our school environment, and negatively impact their engagement with our schools. Because of our Level 4 violation and its application to all drugs, including those non-controlled substances, we maintain our recommendation to the change that law enforcement may be contacted. Thank you.
Is muted? My mic is muted. Okay. So I'll say that again. We have some board members that are on the call that won't be able to raise their hand, so I will defer to them real quick when anybody has questions. Mrs. Cracky, do you have any questions?
Not on that one.
Okay. Ms. Cassidy, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Alrighty, opening up to anyone else on the board that might have questions, comments. Mr. Pearlman? Nope.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the update. I do want to just spend some time talking about some of my concerns again with the proposal. While it is an accurate statement to say that there is no Nebraska law that requires reporting of drug offenses, that's, honestly, that's a little bit, it's a little bit misleading because anytime that a student is in a position where their mental or physical health may be placed in jeopardy, then that triggers the mandatory reporting. And I simply can't envision a situation where a controlled substance is being sold, and that requirement is not met. So what I did was made the suggestion that we break out some of these things. Because at the beginning of Dr. McFarland's comments, I heard that there was a concern about criminalizing non-criminal acts. Nobody on this board is trying to do that. Nobody on this board wants to do that. Actually, the suggestion, maybe it's nice, maybe I'm just taking it too personal, is really a little insulting. Nobody thinks that any police should be called if an Advil is found in a kid's backpack, or if a student gives their friend a Tylenol because their friend has a headache. Nobody, nobody wants to do that. So what we can do is not lump in selling heroin in the same policy as, you know, selling a Tylenol. These are things that we can do. But to suggest that a child's health is not in jeopardy when they are selling methamphetamine or even alcohol or cocaine is, I can't, I can't understand that. And I don't think most people can understand that. And so I stipulate that selling an Aleve is like a non-issue. So I guess I'm, I think I made my point on that. It's just, we should not, and actually legally, we cannot. I'm telling you. You can take my word or not. I'm telling you, we cannot lawfully not report to authorities when somebody sells heroin or cocaine in our schools. Secondly, and I brought this up last time, what is a staff member or teacher supposed to do when they, when they see a student doing that? I don't think it's too big of a presumption to say they, they take the drugs from the student, and then what? Because there's no lawful way to possess that drug as a staff member or student. There's more problems. If a student is selling pills and they have a number on it, say 335, and like a W on the other side. Our teachers aren't trained for this. So nobody is trying to criminalize this. Drug abuse is a health crisis. It's primarily a health crisis and should be treated that way. And our criminal justice system is recognizing that. But we're not even, we're not even going there right now. What we're talking about is the duty to report. And I have more comments when it comes to other problems that I have with the code. And I'll just, I'll try to be brief, but I mentioned that under sexual assault, and I think that's page 18, but OPS requires law enforcement to be called when there is a first degree or second degree sexual assault, but not third degree sexual assault. I'm told that that is under the harassment section of the code. Sexual assault is not harassment. One way I would like to explain it is, if you had a Venn diagram, all sexual assaults involve harassment, but not all harassments involve sexual assault. You know, let me say this. Within the last few minutes, we approved a settlement for an OPS teacher who sexually assaulted a child at school. When that was first reported, by all accounts, from public information, you can see it in the news reports, it was a third degree sexual assault. It was only through later investigation that it was determined to be something more serious. So we cannot have a policy that does not require reporting of all sexual assaults. Again, that's not an option. We just approved a $600,000 settlement on this issue. So that's one other issue. If there's any other comments, I can kind of refer to my notes. I will say that the data is clear on going from mandatory to discretionary consequences. I know that that's nobody's intent. Nobody, the board, the administration, nobody wants Nobody, the board, the administration, nobody wants disproportionate consequences for any of our students. But the data, the research, the past practice of school districts across the country, there's, there's a mountains of data to show that when school districts go to discretionary punishments, how that ends up. And I would just hope that before we put that into a code, that we take a step back. We don't have to do that right now. I would, I would just ask that this gets a deeper dive into the data. I've shared it with many of you on the board. The research is done to show that, that this is not good for, for certain students. They're just treated differently based on what zip code they live in or implicit bias on, on staff members. And so I don't want to be a part of putting that into a code. And, and I'll just leave it at that for now.
Mr. Pearlman, I would also suggest that, that students benefit, some students benefit when there's a mandatory policy as well because it's not reported. They are under-reported. So it's not, my, you know, I, I would share that it is the, the easy work is determining whether or not it's mandatory or discretionary. The hard work is making sure that folks are not treating different children with a different set of, with a different set of rules, even though they have a written set.
I understand what you're saying. I, you know, that's just one aspect of everything that I, I have an issue here with, and we're what, two votes away from codifying all this, but there's, there's just no question. The drug thing is debatable. If the district wants to have a policy that says you don't have to report someone that's selling heroin, meth, fentanyl in the hallways, it'll catch up to the district. The sexual assault one, that's incredible to me considering what we just did in the last 10 minutes, but we'll see how the vote goes.
Thank you, Mr. Pearlman. Mrs. Gadding.
Thank you. So I just want to point out that when I ran for this board, one of the first things I ran on, and one of the key things that I ran on with my constituents, was safety. And I do have an issue with the selling, distributing, intent to distribute drugs. I understand that we have students who may use drugs. Those students need assistance and help. Those are not the students I'm talking about. I am very, and I'm not talking about the student who gives their friend a Tylenol or an Ibuprofen or any of those things either, but I'm referring back to some of the things that Mr. Pearlman brought up. Selling drugs, as a parent of a high, of high school students, and I'm a past, parent of three past students, knowing that we would not be potentially reporting, selling and distributing illegal drugs is a grave concern for me. Students who might purchase those drugs may end up being abused by the person who sold the drugs. They may be abused by someone else. They may, that student who bought those drugs may end up with an injury, a suicide, an unintentional death. And I just think we owe our parents the responsibility to stand firm and say, if it's an illegal drug, we're not going to say we might report. And when I look at this as a teacher, I don't know how I would respond to that because basically it says, okay, if you're selling beer in the parking lot, I might call the police, but maybe I won't. And then the students get in a car, drive off, and have a horrific accident. So I have, I have a problem with this, and I'm going to just say that I, I don't think I can, I can't support, and I agree with Mr. Pearlman's comments on the third degree sexual assault as well. So that's, that's all I have to say on this.
Thank you, Mrs. Gadding. Dr. Holman.
Thank you, President Snow. I wonder if it might be worth further, further discussion in regards to Mr. Pearlman's point regarding the third degree sexual assault, not being a lawyer and just kind of getting, becoming more knowledgeable on the difference between first, second, and third, and what they all mean and what they all entail. I wonder if it would be in our best interest to maybe further discuss this because it seems logical. It seems, the points that he has brought about and has shared with us, I, just based upon that alone, I tend to agree with him on that. And so my thoughts are, I wonder if we should just further discuss this and just kind of hear maybe more in-depth both sides from the district as to why they decided what they've decided and then just kind of compare and contrast with what Mr. Pearlman has presented with us or to us.
I, sorry about that. So what was your question again to see if we could try to get some of these peoples, not people, just get Mr. Pearlman and Mrs. Gadding's questions answered? Is that your?
I don't know. I mean, I don't know how everyone else feels about it, but, or if anyone else has any thoughts about this, but I think it's definitely worth further discussion.
So, so one second, before we continue, because it's going to be a lot of questions. Dr. McFarland, are you there?
Yes, I'm still here.
This entire document, if I'm correct, has been reviewed by legal in-house counsel as well as our outside counsel?
I, I can tell you that yes, it has been shared with our in-house counsel.
I'm assuming in-house counsel shares that with outside counsel. So we've had people that legally represent the district, and it's their job to, that has reviewed it. So I want everyone to at least know that before we go down this conversation. And then also for those that are listening to this meeting, it's, these are hypotheticals that people on the board are bringing up. It's not a... So, Mrs. Crackey.
You know, with the intensity here and with the importance of what we're talking about, it doesn't seem like we should wait for someone to give us an opinion on a piece of paper. I have a feeling that the board, when they do convene or should convene, some things that we're doing like this online are just not thoroughly felt that we are doing without people in the boardroom, and we are one-on-one or in the boardroom. And it seems to me, I know that we're going to have the meeting after the next one in the boardroom. I don't know if we can wait and have this one at that time. I just think there's some things that we really need to meet about rather than just kind of seeming like we're passing it. And even though you ask questions in between time, the discussion is a very important part of what we're doing and decide.
Thank you, Mrs. Crackey. I believe I saw some other hands raised. Ms. Snite, did you have your hand raised? If it pleases the board, Dr. McFarland, do we need this approved today? Or, I mean, I know we have to send it to the print and have it make sure it's ready for our students. We could have a little bit more thoughtful discussion, having more questions and looked at with the board, have their questions answered? Will we be able to have this ready by the start of school if we push it back to the next official board meeting?
This item, and Mr. Ray, please weigh in, but this item is before you tonight as action to come back for final approval at the July meeting, which then is our scheduled plan to go to PMP. I will just add to, add that the, there was no recommended change to our sexual assault violation or code, the code violation, and that has been in the code for several years and was presented also to the Douglas County Attorney last year.
The Douglas County Attorney signed off on. Do we routinely send this, the Code of Conduct to the county attorney as well, just so they know what we're approving?
That was first added last year.
Okay. We have another question. Dr. Holman?
Dr. McFarland, can you tell us when is the last date that this needs to be approved so that I can get to PMP in time for school distribution?
In working with PMP, we typically have it to them in June. I did ask for an extension. We do have a plan to have our student handbooks and our Code of Conduct available online, and their deadline was in July. But I would say, and Mr. Ray again, we serve at the pleasure of the board.
Thank you. Mrs. Gadding, you have your hand raised. You're next. And I will actually make, entertain a recommendation to actually table us to the next board meeting, official board meeting, just to let everybody know, because I'm getting hands raised about this. So, Mrs. Gadding.
Okay. No, I, I just wanted to point out that apparently I was taken off the TV when I was speaking, and one of the concerns that I had, which wasn't available for our TV audience, was the fact that if a student was selling alcohol in a parking lot, a teacher saw it, how would they be able to know how to respond? Did they let the student drive away, or do they call the police? And I think it's a very, it, it is something that happens, and I don't want us to be irresponsible as adults. So I'm fine tabling it and trying to split out some of these things, following state statutes, doing, you know, for those things that are illegal, let's be responsible and let's take care of the kids in our buildings.
Thank you, Mrs. Gadding. Wasn't sure what your first statement was. You were taken off the TV, but that's fine.
Apparently, apparently the TV channel went out, and so...
Oh, that's why, okay, makes sense.
...watching, and so I'm just repeating what I had said for their benefit.
I understand. Apologize this. All righty. Well, if, Mr. Pearlman, we tabled it to the next board meeting, will we be able to, you be able to work with the Code of Conduct and try to get your answers, your questions answered and concerns answered? Mrs. Gadding, she's okay with that as well? Yes?
Absolutely. And just, if you, just very briefly. So just to recap, real, real brief. No way do I think that there should be any sort of law enforcement contact for children giving away Tylenols, aspirins, things like that. And my other big thing that I, I will not budge on is if there is a sexual assault observed by a staff member, law enforcement must be contacted. And I can't speak for the Douglas County Attorney, but there are OPS schools in Sarpy County, and I can assure you that in Sarpy County, if there is a sexual assault observed in a school, it will be reported. And again, we just paid out, approved the payment of a $600,000 settlement on something that was initially reported as a third degree sexual assault. I mean, this is just, I mean, I'll work on, on this in the next couple of weeks, but I'm, this is low-hanging fruit stuff right here.
Thank you, Mr. Pearlman. So at this item here, we will table this until the next official board meeting, which is July 13th. Is that correct, Mr. Ray?
That is correct.
All righty. Well, we'll move on to the next item, I-1B. And Dr. McFarland, sorry about that. Thank you so much for presenting tonight and, and serving the pleasure of the board. We do appreciate that. And hopefully we can get Mrs. Gadding, Mr. Pearlman, and others that raise some concerns answered and make sure that we have our students understanding the clarity of the new, the Code of Conduct changes as well as our teachers as we start the next school year. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item I-1B, Mr. Pearlman, I think is the one, one of this item pulled. It's I-1B and I-1C. The floor is yours, Mr.
Thank you. Just give me one moment. Need to toggle to pull that up. So this is I-1B? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Um, oh, yeah, here it is. Yeah, thanks for pulling it off the consent. Um, I know this is...
Are we talking about both of these, just the first one or the second one or all together? I just want to so everyone knows. Because they practically go hand in hand, but one's the Declaration of the Surplus, and the other one is the approval of the listing, which has the language in there or vice versa.
I'm only talking about I-1B Resolution for the Listing of Yates for Sale.
Go ahead.
So as we all know, this is a item that there's a lot of community interest in, and I just want to make sure that, that folks are on a level playing field. Because I'm, I'm seeing some things that are, are leaving me wondering if that's actually the case. You know, there's, we got an email on Friday, the board did, from a group interested in buying the property. And in that email, they knew what conditions were going to be imposed on the sale of the building. Now, see, that's curious to me because we hadn't made that public yet. And so I just, I would like to know what discussions have been had with any group interested in buying this property and what they've been told as a, as a part of the sale. And I also have some questions about what exactly it means. And I, I sent this email a few days ago. What does it mean to use a building for an educational purpose? And what recourse does the district have if a developer or purchaser, not necessarily developer, if a purchaser buys a, buys Yates for X and says, we're going to use it for educational purposes? And they clean up the building, it takes a couple of years, and, and then they don't. What, what recourse does OPS have? And so, you know, there's a group out there that says that they're confident that they're gonna, they're gonna win the bid, and they, they know what conditions there are, and they, they knew what they were before it being made public. And so I just have some questions about that, and if, if there's anyone here who can shed light on kind of what's led up to this, I think there's just a great amount of community interest in knowing the answer to those questions.
So that you have a lot of, several questions in there. So I think your first one, I believe, is directed to board members or anyone that's on this call about the group. And I believe the group that you're talking about is the email from Chris Foster, who does not represent, let me pull up the email here. Chris Foster, who, if I'm correct, is just part of the Neighborhood Association of Gifford Park, but it says on here Yates Future Effort, which the people that are listed there are people from the neighborhood that is Gifford Park there.
So I'm, I guess I, maybe this is a question for administration. Is, is this group working with the board or should it be working with administration? Or is it a combination? Because I, I have no role in this. I, and I, I honestly don't care. The things they're talking about sound great. I just, I don't know if this is something that the board's taking the reins on, if this is something that's going to go through administration, or just trying to get some clarity on that.
Um, Mr. Ray, sorry. When was the agenda posted on Friday? Was, were these items on the agenda on Friday before 2:31?
These items were posted on the agenda, yes, but the, they weren't, the agenda wasn't posted till later that day, yes.
Okay. What was your next question, Mr. Pearlman? I don't...
Who, who is leading the discussions with potential buyers?
I think the conversation that has happened in the past is that Dr. Logan has mentioned that she was, that we did have an organization reach out to her that expressed interest in... into the property, of purchasing the property. And I believe she has mentioned that several times at the board table as well as to board members. You saw the email on here as well. I don't think there is a consorted effort on that. I think it is a simple, what has happened in the district and other districts is a partnership of an organization reaching out to the district, expressing interest and wanting information on that. And today is what we're approving of that information.
Well, I can, I can speak a little bit, Mr. Snow.
Go ahead, Dr. Logan.
As I have shared, I know I've shared a few times, that the organization came to me, it's Gifford Park, you know, community organization, and it's a consortium of folks who have an interest in, and they have from the beginning. And they came with a... I knew that they were reaching out to board members. You may remember, recall on January 9th that I shared something with board members, saying if they do come to you, to send them back to administration because you all will be the vote on that. And so, they came and met with me as well as Dr. Sturba and some other folks from the district. And we listened to what they, what they would like to do and what I shared with them then. And every other time was the intent is to surplus the building. And if they are interested in buying it, they need to get their monies together to buy it. And I've had a couple more interactions with folks, and they have been very nice. You know, I will, you know, we'll say that and they've been consistent in what their interest is. And I have said it every time, the goal that you, the thing that you need to be focused on is, you know, is the anticipation that the building will be surplus and then you can purchase it and then, you know, do with it whatever it is that you would like. Last week, we met and we talked about with the board, some options about whether or not we could put conditions on it or not put conditions on it. I was able to, and the whole team was able to garner from the board the interest in putting conditions on the sale, given the high amount of activism and the altruistic nature of what the group was intending to do for the public good. And that's, that's kind of where, that's kind of where we are. It's been, you know, I know I've sent, I know I've sent a lot of emails about it because one of the things I shared was I wanted to be, everything to be above board, that there weren't any, there wasn't anything going on that wasn't anything but proper. And, you know, shared that, actually, we asked the Realty Company to be on the call tonight, should the board have questions about the, the, I can't think of the word, the, what, what could potentially be garnered in a sale of the property? And they're on the call tonight. I think that's, does that answer your question, Mr. Pearlman?
Uh, yes and no. It partially is. Because all, everything you just said, I already know. And I, and I know you've tried hard to remind the board of how this should go and to direct all questions from potential buyers back to you and the administration. You've said that repeatedly. And that's, that's kind of my concern here, is when we get an email Friday early afternoon that knows the conditions before they've been made public. And also, in that email, talks about partnering up with the board members to see how to get this done and then make social media posts saying that they're confident that they're going to win the bid. You know? It's just...
Mr. Pearlman, are you implying that someone, the conversation from, the closed session conversation was that someone on the board leaked a closed session conversation? Or am I looking too far into it?
I'm stating the facts. I'm stating that this email has the conditions in it before they're made public. Any implication is from you. I'm telling you the facts. I don't know if they found out what the conditions were.
Understand.
Or how they found it out. Maybe they just made a really good guess.
Understand.
So, my other question is, is what recourse do we have? Should this group... What is, what does it mean, educational purpose? And what, I mean, what, you know, what does that mean?
Sure, Mr. Pearlman, if I might, Mr. Snow. So, what is educational purpose? It's defined by the board. So, you'll be able to see, once those bids come back or responses come back or response comes back, if the person that submitted their bid to purchase the Yates property would meet your definition of educational purpose. I think it's generally broad, but that, that's up to the board to make that determination. Your second question relates to, you know, what's the recourse of the board if that person says, "I'm going to have an educational purpose, this is it", and then they end up not doing that? You know, I would say to you that generally speaking, you know, anyone can enforce that lawsuit and say that that, you know, lawsuit does that, you know, what they're doing with the property now doesn't enforce those covenants, you know, including various taxpayers in the area. There's a lot of opportunity. I mean, anyone can sue anyone for any reason and you can sue it because they're not meeting the covenant under the law. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Godding.
Thank you. So, I have, I don't have any issue with I-1B, which is the declaration of surplus. My concern is I-1C, which is the approval of the listing for the sale of the surplus property. And, and I realize that, Mr. Snow, you and I are the only ones that are on this board from 2014, but I think from a board integrity standpoint, we always have to think about what was done in the past, even if we weren't all serving in that capacity. So, I went back and I looked at the Phase 1 bond that we took to the community. And in that, we said we were going to procure land for two elementary schools in South Omaha and then the two high schools at a cost of $30 million, 147. We actually ended up spending 1.3 million more than what we had said on that part. We did not include the purchase of the land in Gifford Park because we really hadn't intended to do that. We had intended to renovate Yates. We ended up spending 18.2 million to build the Gifford Park School. When we went to the community, we told them we would spend 16.98 or really 17 million. So, we ended up spending 1.344 million more on building the new Gifford Park School, which is wonderful and is certainly a far better building than what we could have done with the Yates building. So, I don't have a problem with that. But what I do have a concern of is that we make sure we make the taxpayer as whole as we possibly can. And so, that's where I'm concerned about putting conditions on that might limit the individuals that would purchase it and limit the overall price. My second issue with it is if we put conditions on for, say, 10 years, that it needed to be used for educational purposes, whatever those happen to be, just because we are appreciating activism and the altruistic nature of the neighborhood where it's at, if we're not doing that in every single community in the district, that's a concern. But at the end of 10 years, if that organization who purchases it decides they want to sell it at market value and not have to worry about those conditions, then they get the benefits that the taxpayer didn't get. And so, that's my second concern, is that in both cases, the taxpayer loses out. My third one kind of goes back to what Mr. Pearlman said, and I'm just looking at this email that came to us on Friday. There's a line in here that says, "Katie is talking with Kimra on the process moving forward and on what we should prepare for Monday and beyond regarding our proposal to purchase Yates." So, I guess I'm just wondering if, if that's a board member that was involved in these conversations or exactly what's going on. So, the email in general raised concerns for me because it certainly appears as though the work had already been done and that the, the sale and everything was already set up. And so, I guess I have some of those same concerns that Mr. Pearlman does on exactly how did this come to be? And if we have board members that were involved, I assume that they would be abstaining from any vote on this particular item. So, my concern again is with I-1C, the approval of the listing. I want to make sure that we're making the taxpayers as whole as we possibly can when what we did was different than what we told them we were going to do in 2014. And then that we are getting the best price that we can without conditions. So, I don't happen to be in favor of the conditions. And I appreciate that the community wants that and if someone wants to purchase the building at a full market value and do have their own conditions on that, I think that's wonderful. But I prefer we get the best price. And that's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Godding. Any other questions from members of the board? Alrighty. I would... Is everyone okay if we make a recommendation to approve both of those items together? Or would somebody be voting for one and against the other? I just want to know before I...
I will be voting for I-1B and against I-1C.
Okay, so we'll do it separate. So, entertain a motion to approve I-1B?
I move approval for resolution. Um, let's see. You know what? I move approval for item I-1B.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve item I-1B, the declaration of surplus for the property at 3262 Davenport. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Crackey. Discussion. Mr. Ray, roll call, please. Ryan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snite?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy? Cassidy?
Aye.
Godding?
Aye.
Paulman?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Pearlman?
I'm going to pass because I, at this time, I don't have enough information.
So, no vote? Okay. Thank you. Eight votes. Each ayes. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to item I-1C, I've entertained a motion to approve the listing of cell for the 3262 Davenport property. The sale of the surplus.
So, move.
There's a motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second?
Second, Kimra Snite.
Second by Ms. Snite. Any discussion? Alrighty. Just let everyone know, this property originally from the family, the Yates family, was given to the district. And I just want people to know that. And the district has a history of working with communities that we reside in, that making sure that we take care of the communities we live in and making sure we're good stewards of taxpayer dollars, as well as making sure that as we move forward and anything that we do, it's in the interest of our kids and education. So, Mr. Ray, roll call, please. Smith?
Aye.
Snite?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Godding?
No.
Paulman?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Pearlman?
I'm going to abstain. I don't have enough information on this to make a decision.
Ryan?
Aye.
Seven aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's go back into here. Moving on to item I-1D, I believe, Mrs. Godding wanted this pulled. The floor is yours.
Thank you. So, I don't have an issue with the initial part of the, of this particular agenda item. I did send Mr. Snow an email last week. And, and the main purpose for me pulling it is that we need to hold ourselves accountable to the constituents who elected us. And just to make clear, and in my email to Mr. Snow, what I wrote was, "We individually evaluate the superintendent. We collectively supervise the superintendent. So, therefore, we do need to review the evaluation in its entirety, each one of us, to establish both areas for reward and areas for growth." We have done our job in the past by not giving away our authority, which is very important. So, why would we not also do that in this role, which we are elected to do? Foresmanship 101 calls on us to fulfill the primary responsibility of supervising the superintendent. The proper order in most cases is to first do an evaluation and then do the superintendent contract, not the other way around. I believe that we should collectively review the comments in the evaluation that we've all put in. And if we don't, as, as a governance body, we're falling short. So, I would propose the following motion, that the Board of Education hereby affirms the Board President Snow met to conduct and complete Superintendent Logan's evaluation on Monday, January, or June 15th, 2020. And that the full evaluation be provided to the entire board for review and to establish in said areas of growth.
So, with your motion, you're saying that the board will establish areas of growth for the superintendent?
Typically, what we've done always in the past is that once, once we look at the evaluation, we can see, oh, these are things that we would like to see advanced. And that's what most boards do. I mean, I think...
Are you talking about what we've done? So, in the past, what we have done, to my regulation, regulation, thinking back, is that with the superintendent, that we would leave a copy in the board closed session room and board members can go in there and review that as well. That, that was, I don't, I don't remember a setting areas of growth.
So, in the past, what we...
One second, Nancy.
Just a minute. So, in the past, what we did was, we did areas of praise, obviously, in public, just like state statute allows you to do. And then what we did, always in closed session, was everyone got to get a copy of the full evaluation. And during that time, then we could collectively talk with the superintendent about things that would move our district forward. And so, I think that if we're really going to move the district forward, we have to have that opportunity to collectively say, here's some things that we would like to see advanced. No matter what, we all should be given the opportunity to look at the full evaluation.
So, why don't we just approve the motion, prove the item as it is, and then at the next board meeting, have a copy for board members to look at? And have that...
I, I have a problem. I think I have a problem here.
Go ahead.
A problem isn't with Superintendent Logan. My problem is, I think we need to do the evaluation in the future with any, any superintendent. We need to do the evaluation. Then we need to draw the piles and we need to look at it. We need to see some things we want to improve on and move forward. And this, I don't know how we happen to have this come like at the same time, giving people raises and not seeing evaluations. That wouldn't be good in a big business for sure, and we are a big business. So, I think we need to do that peak. I don't know how it got this other way around. I have no idea.
Mrs. Crackey, it got this way because I did that. So, I, I mean, I'm going to let you know that and everybody on the board, because everybody on the board does know. I was... everybody on the board does know, I was in control of that. Now, we don't have to dance around it. It's true. So if we want to sit around the table and have that discussion, I can consult the superintendent because that's her evaluation. And then at the next board meeting in closed session, if she agrees with this, we can have that where board members can review her evaluation. It is, it's all collected together and review those comments.
And I don't want to sit around in the boardroom. I don't want it setting out-
No, we're not, we're not, because it's a private matter.
I mean, the thought was, you know, whatever. I can't do that. No.
Well, you have to also understand it's COVID-19, so we haven't been able to meet in person in the board as well. So I'm not disagreeing with you. Just let me finish. So we approve this item as it is on the agenda. And then with me talking to the superintendent and do that, if she agrees with that, in closed session. Is that, are you okay with that, Mrs. Godding?
Yes, as long as we, no matter what, all have the opportunity to look at the evaluation. Because I think that's, I think that's critical in both that reward component and also the accountability piece. I mean, that's the, that's a main thing that we're supposed to be doing is, is accountability. And so I want to make sure that this board and future boards don't lose sight of that, that important role of governance.
Thank you. So would you redact your motion?
I would change it to say, the Board of Education hereby affirms that Board President Snow met to conduct and complete Superintendent Logan's evaluation on Monday, June 15th, 2020, and that all board members have the ability to access that evaluation via Mr. Ray, or however we would be able to see it.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Perlman. Now, open it up for discussion about the motion that is on the floor. Mr. Smith?
Yes, with that being provided, would everybody's comments remain anonymous or would they be-
Yes, they will remain anonymous. That, that is something that-
Okay, thank you.
President Snow, I'm sorry, I don't have hand raised capability. Sorry about that. I just want to reiterate what Mrs. Godding has said. I absolutely agree with pretty much everything that she said. She's spot on. And I do commend you for, I mean, we don't need to, to go backwards in how we got to this point. But I, I just would like to see for future, as Mrs. Godding pointed out, we do need to make sure that things are aligned properly from going forward, here forward. And it does make a logical, it makes logical sense that you evaluate someone. If you are a collective board, and we do, we have shown that we, as a board, we value our accountability. And we don't want to see that authority taken away from us. We've made that clear in past votes that that is extremely important to us. So if we are collectively working together as a board and we are evaluating our superintendent, I think that we then need to be able to do just that and sit together and, as Mrs. Godding said, do the evaluation, you know, praise versus non-praise. I think it makes complete sense. So I am, I'm just reiterating that I would, I would completely want to see it aligned for future a little bit better, if that makes sense. But I will, I'm in favor of this motion, the way that you've reworded it.
Thank you, Mrs. Cassidy. So the committee that does this is the Accountability Committee that takes the lead on this. So I just want to put that out there, that we do have suggestions from board members. But this isn't just, we are holding the superintendent accountable. If we do have challenges on things, I strongly suggest that you run to want to be on those committees as we go through that process. Because I do believe, at the end of the day, people are working hard to make sure that the district keeps moving forward. And I don't want us to get caught up in, you know, what we were doing. And our superintendent is an amazing superintendent. And I just want us to understand that as a board. Because I feel like sometimes we could get lost over here and not focused what's in front. And that's just my personal opinion. So, Ms. Dr. Holman? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Just before we vote, could you remind us all again exactly what the motion is on the floor?
Thank you. Mrs. Godding, sorry about that. Could you-
Yeah, no, I can, I can do that. So the Board of Education hereby affirms that Board President Snow met to conduct and complete Superintendent Logan's evaluation on Monday, June 15th, 2020. And that the board has access to review the full and complete evaluation through the Board Secretary's office.
Thank you.
Alrighty, Mr. Ray, are you ready? Oh yeah, I've been ready. Been ready? Roll call, please. Snite?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Godding?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Perlman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Nine aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for doing that and for completing the evaluation. And Dr. Logan sent an email praising the board for doing the evaluation. Move on to our next, yes, Mr. Perlman?
Was that vote just on the motion or the underlying agenda item? Do we still need to vote on the underlying agenda item?
The underlying agenda item on here, she changed the motion so we don't have to. Because it was the item, it just says superintendent evaluation. So we could have said, I approve, moved to approve item I-1D. But-
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to item I-2A, the recommended 2020, 2021 calendar changes. And I will pass it on to Dr. Logan.
I didn't have my thing undone. I'm gonna do this in conjunction with Mr. Smith-Bonnie, and he's going to start. He's gonna give the, most of the presentation. What I can say to start the presentation is that as we are looking around our state and country, we do see, and the fact that children have been out of school, our elementary children since March 4th, our secondary children since March 6th, that we have the opportunity and the need to adjust our calendar so that we can have as much in-person time, based on the information that we know right now, which is always subject to change, so that we can have as much in-person time with our young people. The major changes are to start a week early and to have, and to move that week to the time around the winter holiday, when experts from around the nation and the world and in our state are suggesting that the virus would reemerge in such a way that it could cause some particular disruptions. And so I will have Mr. Smith-Bonnie start and give some of the particulars, and then I'll be available for questions if there are any. Thank you.
Good evening, President Snow, Vice President Dr. Holman, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Logan. Thank you for that starting of the presentation. If you'll go, thank you. If you'll go ahead, one more slide, Mr. Ray, please. Okay, we'll look specifically at the recommended changes that Dr. Logan prefaced. In general, schools start one week earlier than originally proposed, with class beginning on August 11th versus August 18th, as was originally proposed. Next slide, please. Semester one conferences and curriculum days were pushed later in the school year to allow for maximum possible in-person instruction time, dependent on health conditions and continued guidance. Curriculum days that typically occur in September were moved to October, and conferences that typically occurred in the middle of October were moved to the end of October. Next slide, please. As indicated earlier, winter break will be extended by one week. Additionally, the semester end date was moved nearly one month later, now ending on January 15th, to allow for the potential of more in-person instruction time to accommodate the socio-emotional needs of our student and the targeted instruction towards the learning losses associated with COVID-19 community mitigation efforts that began in March of 2020. Next slide, please. The 2020, 2021 school year is proposed to end at the same time as was originally proposed, including senior release stay for 2021 seniors, denoted in yellow shading on May 14th. Next slide. That's the end of our presentation. We are now prepared to answer the questions that you may have.
You, and by the way, Mr. Smith-Bonnie, I don't know what has happened since you haven't been in the tack building, but your voice sounds very professional, so-
Working on my diction. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Well, keep up the good work. You could be the voice of the district. Dr. Logan, you can be the voice. Passing on to Dr. Logan, and then if board members, I think Dr. Holman has her hand raised, if you have anything first.
We'll start with Dr. Holman's question. One thing I didn't mention is that we did issue a joint statement, I believe it was on June 8th, with our educators, Omaha Educators Association. And we have met with our, our bargaining partners in reference to this change. We do realize that there may be some families or some folks that are impacted by previous plans. And we have already thought of, we'll, we could take care of that situation by situation, if there are families that, I know a couple, I've had maybe three people email me in reference to that. And we've told them we would work with them on a case-by-case basis. And they have been really lovely and understanding, you know, that there is, the understanding the need and also advocating for themselves, which is certainly appropriate. So that has been the, I have not received, I would say, a groundswell of those. I know that I've received three from, from folks. But it's something that we certainly could anticipate. Mostly, I've heard from several parents who want to know if I, we can take them in July, take the students back in July, because we've been home for a long time. And I, you know, they love their, they love their youngsters, but know that it would be great if, when school can get back in session, especially in-person school. So that's pretty much all I have to report on that, on that front. Haven't really received a groundswell either way, and do appreciate our labor partners working with us and understand, understanding the extraordinary conditions, and that we are trying to plan, win the plan and then replan. And quite frankly, all of these plans, we could make all of these and something situationally change that we are unaware of. So that's pretty much all I have to share.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Dr. Holman, did you have your hand raised?
I got to lower it the last time. I apologize.
Any questions from members of the board? And remember, this won't, we'll have a special board meeting on the 29th to approve this. So if you don't have questions or anything now, you can, you have time to bring them in, constituents and other people to reach out to the superintendent and staff to get their questions answered about the calendar change. And I'm seeing no hands raised. And just FYI, Mrs. Crackey is on my phone, so if I look like I'm looking down all over the place, I had to turn my phone on. So anytime I get a, messages are coming through, it like mutes her on here. So just FYI, so it doesn't look like I'm. All right, well, that's our last item on there. Recede reports, we have the CBAC update for Phase 1 and Phase 2 for the bond. And I believe we have closed session. Dr. Holman?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals, to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel, negotiations, pending litigation, and legal advice.
This motion to go on closed session by Dr. Holman, is there a second?
Second, Kimar.
Second by Ms. Snite. Roll call, please. Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Godding?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Perlman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snite?
Aye.
Nine, nine aye. Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for the closed session is for the protection of the public interests and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals, to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel. This will be negotiations, pending litigation, and legal advice. Let the record reflect, the board went in the closed session at 7:58. Thank you. Let the record reflect the board went into closed session at 7:58. Thank you.
Do a complete meeting on Teams with my laptop. I've no idea. This is the second meeting in a row it's done it. I came back and you guys were already on Yates.
We're out of close. Sorry, go ahead real quick. We'll just adjourn the meeting. Board came out of a closed session at 8:35. Meetings adjourned. Sorry.
I know. I was just betting about technology.
Good night everybody.
Good night. Thank you.